Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. We first item is the approval of the agenda. If I understand the call, we do have some changes? Number?
Yeah, so the number five on the agenda, the applicant has requested a continuance. So we, if the zoning commission is okay with that, we'll continue that case until next month.
So remove item number five. Need a motion to approve the agenda, the modified agenda?
So moved.
Please hold on.
Need a second. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Uh, the second item is the approval of the minutes. It appears we don't have the form for the June twenty-fourth.
Hopefully, we can move that to the end of the meeting.
You have Jonathan.
Yes.
And then, uh, review of the October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, zoning commission meeting minutes. Any changes?
No changes from me.
No.
Okay. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Paul, please.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
abstain.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Okay, and at this time, I understand, we have a quasi judicial hearing. Do you want to read the script? She's going to outline the rules and procedures for the.
First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to the compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may do so only after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents his case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone is in opposition, if anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and affiliation to this case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless commission members request that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show the support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. This time, we'll, uh, find a quasi judicial hearing for the planned unit development case three days, two zero two four PUD for five two seven five Beechmont Avenue. Paul, will you give the staff report?
Thank you. Um, the applicant is John Lucas, project manager for K four Architecture, and he's representing U D F, United Dairy Farmers, Inc., who is the property owner. Location is at fifty-two seventy-five Beechmont Avenue, and the current zoning there, uh, on the current property is E. Um, the request is to remove the existing U D F and construct a new U D F gas station, which would be approximately sixty-three hundred square feet, forty-three parking spaces, dumpster enclosure, patio landscaping, and lighting with the fueling pumps. We'll come back to that. So a little bit of the zoning history. The current store was built in nineteen eighty-nine, um, just various zoning procedures throughout the years. In two thousand and two, there's an expansion to the fueling canopy, um, and then relocation of the freestanding sign. This is the current site. The proposed site will be larger, um, so this is the current parcel line. U D F does own both parcels, so the proposal is what you see in your site plan or in your packet with the new parcel and the new location. Um, in this area, these are the fueling stations, the fueling canopy in the current U D F store. This is Elston and then Beechmont Avenue. This is the aerial of the site. Topography, the topography is mainly flat with the current U D F. There is a slight increase in grade, um, and then there's a decrease in grade once you get beyond that. The current zoning is E. Um, across the street, across Beechmont Avenue is zone E E, planned retail for the Skytop Apartments and the retail outlots. On this other corner, this was heard last month, and the zoning commission approved a modification for Wawa, so this is zone E P U D. And then the remainder of the U D F parcel portion is zoned H Riverfront and then D multifamily. The proposed parcel, um, will be in the, in the retail zoning area. So these are the site photos, again, from the corner of Beechmont and Elston, looking at the store, the existing store, the canopy. We're kind of, kind of do a counterclockwise view of the property. So this is looking back, um, at the site standing on Beechmont Avenue. This is on the, uh, west side of the property in the, in the back. Looking from the back, looking across Beechmont Avenue to the Skytop Apartments. And this is looking else, along Elston, um, across the street is where the proposed Wawa is, is going. And then this is the connection to the Little Miami Trail, the connector that, uh, was mentioned in the staff report. And again, the east side of the current U D F. So this is the site plan. Um, again, the proposed development is approximately six thousand three hundred twenty-three square feet of the retail store itself with an outdoor patio, um, the fueling pumps across the front. And these would be relocated further south from Beechmont Avenue, a little bit further away from Beechmont Avenue. There is a proposed right in, right out, or I'm sorry, uh, yes, right in, right out off of Beechmont Avenue, a right in off of Elston, and then full access off of, um, Elston toward the back here. And this is somewhat coordinated with the connections, um, to Wawa and the proposed improvements on Elston Road. Uh, forty-three parking spaces, landscaping, lighting, and we have elevation drawings, so we will get to that in just a second. This is the landscaping plan. There is proposed landscaping along the front, um, some landscaping along Elston. There is a retaining wall toward the back of the property, so the landscaping is, uh, limited to this particular area right here along the parking spaces. And then it goes into the retaining wall in the back of the property. The lighting plan, um, the lighting plan, we were unable to determine compliance because there are different foot candle requirements when adjacent to an H zoning district and a D, uh, which is considered a residential zoning district. So one of our recommendations is that those, uh, be identified on this plan so to show exactly where those zoning district lines fall, so we can determine compliance. As far as the height of the, uh, poles, those are in compliance. The areas along the, the front and the back, uh, along the roadway was compliant. And these are the elevation drawings that were submitted. A mixture of, uh, brick, aluminum vertical siding, cast stone, and metal. This would be the elevation fronting Beechmont, um, the back and the rear, obviously, and then this would be the side facing Elston, where the patio is proposed. There is one sign that's proposed, I believe we, well, these are the canopies, um, over the gas station itself. One, um, sign on each side of the canopy. Um, the freestanding sign, which is proposed, a monument style sign there at the corner of Beechmont and Elston. And then only one sign, wall sign on the building, this is facing Beechmont Avenue. So all of the signage is in compliance with the regulations. Again, the, the canopy. Also, uh, I forgot the oven side and dip side. So with the findings, um, zoning commission is reviewing this because the impervious surface ratio is seventy-three. Anything over sixty percent is required, um, to be reviewed as a, a P U D. Um, the first thing we looked at is compliance with the underlying zoning resolution. Um, so the articles that are listed in the staff report as well in the staff, in the PowerPoint are the items that are not in compliance. One is the lighting plan, and again, we just couldn't determine that based off of the zoning district lines. Um, the landscaping requirements in the parking lot, there were areas, um, that were not in compliance, specifically street trees along the roadways and, uh, along the portion of the parking lot with the retaining wall. And then we just listed some general plan notes that should be modified if this is approved by our zoning commission. So, um, the first bullet item there is the building and canopy lines setbacks need to be identified from the right of way. Um, a survey or stamp site plan would need to be submitted for the zoning certificate. There is an existing sidewalk on Beechmont Avenue. We generally do not recommend removal of sidewalks, but there is a existing, uh, path that the township constructed on Elston. And then there's currently the path that will link up to Little Miami Trail that goes around the back of the store. Um, this was a sidewalk that U D F did donate an easement for, and we felt, we, the one in front, uh, on Beechmont Avenue, uh, would not connect anywhere now. There is no, there will not be a connection to the trail. The trail is being built behind U D F, so that would be what would encourage pedestrians. There should be a pedestrian connection from the sidewalk on Beechmont, uh, I'm sorry, on Elston, or at least at the intersection to the front door. That is a zoning requirement. Um, the dumpster material is of similar material, um, as the current store. There does need to be a stacking space, uh, nine by nineteen shown on the plan for the gas pumps to ensure compliance with our stacking space requirements. A loading space needs to be identified. Um, staff, again, recommends additional street trees along Beechmont Avenue. And then the sign package, like we said, is compliant, eighty-nine square feet of wall signage, and the, uh, monument style sign was also in compliance. So based off of the notes that we just went over, staff is of the opinion that is consistent with our, um, comprehensive plan, the Anderson Plan. The chapters that we reference are economic vitality, land use, and development. Um, we did talk about the Anderson Trails Plan, and again, there is the, um, trail connection on the U D F side of Elston that will connect to the Little Miami Trail around the backside. Um, design guidelines, uh, we did feel that this is consistent with, uh, the township's design guidelines. This does not fall in our Beechmont plan as far as neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods start, um, at, at Salem, essentially, in Beach Acres. Um, so the Skytop area isn't necessarily in our Beechmont plan, but we feel like the design that is proposed is consistent with the Skytop Apartments, the architecture in that particular area, more of an industrial feel versus, um, the residential feel. Um, again, we did mention that there are some areas that the landscaping is not compliant with our, uh, township landscaping requirements, that this should be brought into compliance. Um, pedestrian circulation, there does need to be a connection from the sidewalk on Elston, or at least at the corner of Beechmont and Elston to the front door. And so our recommendation was approval, um, based off of these standards here. I will repeat them. They're in the staff report. So there are two recommended conditions that are in the staff report, um, also in the, um, PowerPoint presentation. The one that we did leave off was the pedestrian connection from the sidewalk to the front door, so. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Paul. We'll start down with Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I'm just, um, I, I'm mindful of the folks who spoke about the Wawa and the lighting considerations for the residences, so I really would want to see what that's going to be. It's really not a question or a comment, I guess.
Okay. Commissioner Reed?
Uh, question for the, for Paul, I guess, or Sarah. There is a retaining wall shown in the back of that. Is it, how prominent is that going to be? I know there was some discussion of, on that appearance of the retaining wall on a different case. Do you guys know, and it just, I was looking at my plans, it says by others, so we don't really see. Do we know what that's going to look like or how obvious it's going to be?
I will ask the applicant that. I had him in my mind four feet tall, but I'm not sure if that's right.
We'll ask them that, because that might be an interesting question. And then, um, you, you kind of answered my other question already, Paul, but I'll ask it anyway, which is, you, you guys do, the staff report does note the pedestrian connection from, like, the primary sidewalk in, but we don't have that as a proposed condition. Is your feeling on that, that because of this, uh, fairly substantial tie-in to the trail, that maybe it's not necessary? Or why did you guys think that wasn't a, an appropriate condition?
No, it does seem to be a condition. We just actually.
Oh.
It was mentioned in the staff report and it didn't carry over to the recommendations.
I see. I know sometimes we don't always approve that when you put it in, but.
No.
Uh, okay, that's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, um, Paul, I've got, and Sarah, I've got a couple of questions for you. Um, the, um, at the corner of Beechmont and Elston, there's a bus stop. So don't, do, we want to have some kind of connection from bus stop, I believe that's where it is, because I go by there all the time. A connection from the bus stop perhaps into the U D F, because I think folks may, or at least to the pavement edge.
I, somewhere in there, yes. There, there needs to be that pedestrian connection from the perimeter sidewalk into the front door. So wherever that ultimately is.
Would you not think that may, I mean, I don't know if folks come down from those apartments and stuff up there, that there maybe should be two connections? One at the, you've got the south, the south end of the site and one at the north end of the bus stop?
There certainly could be, especially with the, the trail, because you're, you will get cyclists as well coming in, uh, from the south.
Okay, that's a real question.
And then the apartments, yes.
Second question is, the forty-four point seven foot candles average under the canopy? Does that meet our, our lighting requirements?
Our lighting requirements are foot candles at the property line. So provided that it is point seven five, excuse me, point seven five at the property line along Beechmont Avenue, um, the same as the retail portion across Elston, so they need to drop significantly, but it would be point seven five.
Uh, and, um, second, or third of all, I guess, uh, you're saying that that's a right in, right out, going to be on Beechmont, and it's shown as a full access? There's no pork chop or anything shown in there, and I don't think it's noted as a right in, right out? So I would add that as a, as any kind of condition?
It was being reviewed by ODOT, and I don't know if we have our final, um, review from ODOT yet.
I'll, I'll step that under the.
Okay.
And then lastly, um, you said there was one sign on the front of the building? There's actually three?
Yes, I misspoke today. There are three.
Yeah, there's two others. There's the oven side and the dip side?
Yes.
Um, it's combined. Does that square footage still, and are, and are the other two channel cut letters on the outside, or are they on the glass?
It was my understanding that they were on the exterior, but we can ask the applicant that as well. But they were, as far as square footage goes, they were well within their allotment.
Okay, I was not going to do the math. I was looking at. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Paul, what's the, uh, the impervious ratio today?
We did not do a calculation today.
Under the sixty?
It, we didn't do that. It wasn't provided, and since they were adding to the property, we didn't compare the.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Follow-ups, staff? Okay, at this time, with the applicant, please come forward, state your name, address, and affiliation with the case.
John Lucas, K four Architecture, five 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 Guest Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two zero three. I'm a representative, working with U D F on other projects. Um, the condition you guys have listed, as far as the landscaping and providing the zoning, the lot line, or the line for the zoning for the lighting plan, we can get that revised and updated for you guys. Um, the proposed access onto Beechmont is full, it's proposed to be full access. We have submitted the M O T to ODOT already. They reviewed it. We're in the process of finishing the traffic study for ODOT to review to make the determination on what we're allowed for access onto Beechmont Avenue. Whether they're going to allow it to be full access or if they're going to make us do right in, right out.
Okay.
Um.
We may feel differently.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a signalized light there for a reason.
That's, that's.
It's a tough area.
Yeah. I don't know what ODOT's going to say. They may force a right in, right out. We don't know.
Okay.
With that entrance ramp that comes on there and everything else, I just, we don't know that answer yet. Our traffic engineer is working with ODOT on that right now. And the county also on both access points onto Elston.
All right. Would you like to add anything to staff's report?
Um.
Or are you ready for questions?
No, I don't think there's anything we really need. Well, our, our, our pedestrian access proposed will be between the two parking areas, so it comes in right by the front door. So it comes across from Elston. That's where we would propose putting a sidewalk to access to the existing bike path.
That's consistent with what you're, Paul?
You know, it, there will be sidewalks on both sides of Elston. Um, U D F, I'm sorry, U D F has the bike, hike, bike path that the township installed over on this side, and then there will be a sidewalk on the Wawa side. There is our crosswalks here, um, to get over there, so I think as long as wherever the bus stop is, that there's, you know, the connection to get to the front door, and wherever that is, like Ms. McBride was saying, it may make sense to also have one through here. Um, is the bus stop here at this corner, or is it over here on this?
I'm not sure.
I, I, I can't remember either. I think it is over here, so. I think, you know, as long as we're accommodating both, the bus stop and the pedestrians and cyclists.
Some of those colors on the signage were not right on, I don't know what happened with that on the presentation, um, when you pulled them up and flipped through them, some of the colors were not correct. They were right on what I, what we sent in. I don't know what happened with, maybe something happened when some, stuff got combined into your PDF. I've seen that happen in the past where the colors get, get messed up, so that's going to be the orange, the purple, and the red, like typically is. And then on the oven side, dip side signs, those are actually like a teal color. If you guys would like to see them. I actually have, yeah, it's consistent with what, yeah, what we've tipped, they've done. We've been doing it at all the projects.
Uh, questions start with Commissioner Baker?
Could you talk about the lighting plan?
Um, on the lighting, that's typically what they do as far as levels. Is that what you're referring to? Yeah, typically, the lighting, actually, I think that's a little lower than some of the other locations that we've done recently, as far as that forty-four she mentioned.
But, but our recommendation, our thing says, the lighting plan submitted does not show the varying zoning district lines, and therefore, compliance cannot be determined.
So we will, so there's a difference in the zoning between the D and the E, so they're requesting we show the line. We will provide that line to staff as requested. We'll have them add that onto the photometric plan.
Other questions? Commissioner Reed?
Just, just one on the existing building there. Um, we were talking a moment ago with, with Paul on, uh, whether, and you said ODOT's looking at that movement there. Um, it's full movement today, correct?
Correct.
Does that function okay from your store's perspective?
Um, as far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay.
I'm not on site, so I don't know if Tim's, Tim knows or not.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Maybe a few comments.
Did you have a question about the, uh, retaining wall?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Well, what is the retaining wall going to look like? I just saw it by others, which, that, that always makes me nervous when I see that, but.
So typically, we would do either ready rock or a redding rock product. Uh, they hadn't selected it and told me which one it is, but it's usually the larger blocks, um, usually the cobblestone. Uh, typically, it could be the limestone one, or there's a.
So some kind of architectural.
It will, yeah, typically it.
It is.
I know.
I didn't, I hadn't talked to Kenny about that.
State your name and address.
Tim Kling, thirty-nine fifty-five Montgomery Road. I'm the director of real estate for U D F.
Okay.
So, so we're working through this, um, retaining wall. In fact, we had a meeting this morning. We have a location up in, uh, Westchester, where we open this Friday, I think it is. Um, we use the Rosetta product, very attractive. Keep in mind, we own, the lenders own the property that surrounds this store, and so therefore, you know, it's to our benefit, because we're planning future, we've had meetings before with Anderson Township and the city about residential being multifamily on that property possibly in the future. So to our benefit, we're going to make that wall very attractive. We do on all of our stores.
What's, what's the height of the wall?
It's a Rosetta stone.
The height.
Oh, the height. We're working through that. We're talking about bringing the grade down back there. Original was nineteen in that back corner by the dumpster. We're talking about bringing that down to twelve. That helps us structurally as well. And then it, I think it goes from like five at Beechmont Avenue, say, to twelve in that back corner. We're going to bring that as low as we can, depending on what we can do with that grade. We've got flood plain over there, you know, towards the creek. Um, and then it drops back down to, I think, five. About four, yeah. As you get out to Elston. Feet by Elston, I do know. So it kind of, you know, ramps up and then back down.
It follows the topography of the outside.
And again, we're going to adjust, since we own all the land, our plan is to adjust those grades to make it more efficient. We don't have a layout for the residential by any means, but we've got some ideas, so we're going to try to bring that down, make it work off of Elston for the future development.
So, okay, so you're talking about the, the D area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
D and potentially H. We'd like H at some point in the future. Um, yeah, I don't see much happening along Beechmont Avenue because the flood plain rides up about where that tree line is. So the only thing to mention, other thing to mention is that access is important to really the U D F store and what's not shown on here, because, again, we're working through multi-parcels here. We'd like to provide cross-access, um, and, uh, I guess on the north end of that west parking, uh, row, uh, into that adjacent property so that someone would not have to go all the way to the light, come up the hill to get into whatever that may be. Um, so we're proposing, we're not going to put it in, but we'd like to, um, you know, accommodate cross-access between those properties down below. It's the only place we can, to be honest with you.
Okay. Commissioner Reed, anything else?
The only other thought I had was, uh, the, the staff is recommending, since that sidewalk will become really of no, not much value that's there, uh, they're suggesting removing that and increasing your landscaping area in the front there a little bit. Would that work with your plan?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not, we, we like, you know, decent amount of landscaping in the front with trees and bushes and flowers and all that. We irrigate everything, so that's, that's not a problem for us. The only question I have is where is that bus stop? And, you know, well, how much of a finger of a sidewalk do we leave or have to redo, I guess, to the west on Beechmont? Is that what we're talking about?
Is there a cutout?
There's a lighter spot right there.
Yeah. Wow. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner McBride?
Yeah, um, just, uh, a couple of things. So the stripes on the canopy, I know you've got stripes today, are those, are they eliminated today or are they going to be eliminated?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, um, let's see, uh, mechanical equipment, um, I, I noticed that it's not screened from, you know, public lightways. Um, and particularly if you're going to be thinking about the residential in the future, I think you want to screen them off their solids for ground protection.
Right.
Um, and, um, how's the tank or, how's the fuel?
Will you go back to that site plan, please? So they're, they're probably, well, proposed would be coming in, um, off of Beechmont Avenue. So if that ends up being a pork chop on Beechmont, we'll have to do a, uh, mountable pork chop. We do it all the time. Um, then they'll, um, you know, approach behind the store, wrap around the front, they deliver off of the, uh, passenger side. And then they would exit back out that same way. Um, or, to be honest with you, they probably won't, you know, if. Or, to be honest with you, they probably won't, you know, if they're taking a left out that way, they will not exit out that way. They'll go back around the store, through the rear, go out at the light.
Or they can come up Elston and come in the right in and get to the tanks.
Yeah, they have the option of coming in that way as well. I'm not sure which way the fuel trucks are coming, and we don't always control that. Because we also have, besides fuel, we have ice cream semis. A lot of our other products come on like a thirty-foot box truck daily now. A lot of our refrigerated products, along with the donuts, those are daily. And those all come around the back or the side for delivery. But yeah, we, we, well, that's why we have so much, I guess, impervious surface, is because of the fact that we've got a lot of semis that traverse the site, and we, we don't want to back it up if we don't have to.
Yeah, it's not safe.
So, so just so I understand, so if they came in off each month though, they go back to circle the back of the store, come back around, back to passengers?
Correct, correct.
Otherwise, if they come in off of Elston, pull up or head it right up, go back around the store and come back after me.
No, no. Why, no, it's probably not a good move. Yeah, maybe at midnight.
The lights on the canopy flush memory very soon?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the sidewalk for the, for the bus stop, I would just look for a connection, you know, so you don't have to block it with grass or the landscape or whatever to the, to the pavement there, because that bus stop does get a lot of use.
So right now, there is a utility pole, the, the sign is just on that utility pole. There is a bench billboard, I don't know whose bench billboard that is, if it's UDF or if it's just a bench billboard.
I mean, it's one that's actually used.
So the bill, or the, the bench is just sitting here in the landscape area, in the grass, but there's no sidewalk to it. The sign for Metro is actually out on the utility pole, right around this particular area. So I think the bus just stops here at the corner.
I'll, I'll leave that to staff, where the connection is.
We don't have a problem putting a cut, I mean, if we don't put it in now, it's gonna end up being a path. And so we've had to do that in the past. It's not a big deal to put a, put a connection there. There's plenty of space.
If that stop is farther to the west, you'll leave that portion of sidewalk to over just pass, a little pass to stop.
If it's in good shape.
Or, or we'll replace that section, we'll get over to where their bus stop is, just so.
I just, I just think it should be some way to get off the bus and get to your store to get whatever.
Without coming up Elston?
Yeah.
Because they won't, they'll take the shortcut.
They're gonna take the shortest path.
Yeah. Exactly.
You're gonna give this much sidewalk.
Exactly. Yep.
And then one other question for you, the outdoor down here, is that you need someone who wants to burn it?
Uh, similar. We're not doing the same, similar. This is a commercial style building, it's residential, but, yeah, it's an outdoor, I don't know how many it seats these days.
But that one does have the lights like we have it.
Yeah, we'll have the, you know, tie net lights and all that.
Yes.
And I mean, I, I think it's really not safe to have that bus stop.
And we heard that during discussions about the bike path and all that, just three years, we've heard that. So, we're just, we always try to keep access, it's more valuable, but at the same time.
That it does, that, that's, that's just not, not a good one, so.
Right.
Thank you, that's all.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Seeing no one, would anyone like to speak in opposition? Okay. You want any other questions for staff? If we close the, seeing none, I will close the, the comment section or session. And, comments among the commission?
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm generally in favor of this. But I think I want those details nailed down about the lighting in particular and its components. I am concerned about the residential areas around that. I think Anna is exactly right that there should not be a left turn egress. And, and we gotta accommodate the bus station, but outside of that, makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yes, well, it's, if it's approved, it's obviously tremendous improvement, awesome store. So, that is, I think, something we would want to encourage, of course. As far as the right in, right out goes, I, my personal opinion on that is two things. One is, of course, we would have to defer to ODOT on what they say, which I heard they're willing to do. And normally, I'd be comfortable relying on the ODOT engineers to, to make whatever restrictions they want to. If it would be beneficial for the store, I'd be okay with leaving it two-way, as long as ODOT approves of that. That's kind of what I think about that. For the retaining wall, I think it would be helpful to maybe have a specification that does have architectural finishes on it. Sounds like you want to do that anyway, so that's not a big deal. And I agree with staff's recommendation to remove the front of the sidewalk to the extent it doesn't interfere with the bus stop, and improve the landscaping there. I think it would look really terrific. And, yes, some of the other comments I heard, I thought were good ones from the board about screening the mechanical and having a good pedestrian connection, making sure the lighting is set up. So, that's all my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner McBride? So it sounds like if we put the, the correct parameters around this, I would welcome a motion.
But could we so make it a part, Paul, maybe I should ask you this, that they actually give the receipts at the pump? Could we, instead of making you have to go into the store all the time, every time, could we?
I think it's better.
All right, I, I will.
That would not be one of the parameters, but.
So, I would put forth a motion then on case three dash twenty twenty-four PUD, UDF at fifty-two seventy-five Beauchamp Avenue, that are, that we recommend, that we approve the request based on staff's findings, including the zoning resolution compliance, consistency with the Anderson Plan, the Anderson Trails Plan and Design Guidelines, staff recommendations and findings, standards for the PUD, subject to the following conditions, that a pedestrian connection be extended from Elston to the store, and pedestrian connection be extended from bus stop to the maintenance area, that compliance with Article five point three, excuse me, point K, which is lighting, be done, that compliance with Article five point three point O, by P1, be obtained, that the roof-mounted mechanical equipment be screened on all four sides, that there be an increase in landscaping materials contained on Beauchamp Avenue in the area that was previously used for the sidewalk area, that the proposed retaining wall be constructed of decorative or architectural materials, and that our recommendation, as far as we're allowed to make on, be that the access point on Beauchamp be right in the right out.
Third, you have it.
That the retaining wall be constructed, be constructed of decorative or architectural materials?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please follow the roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Right. So it's approved four to zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
This time, we'll give a, give you a second if you want to take off, and then Commissioner McBride, you're recusing yourself.
I will be recusing myself, since Kroger is my largest client.
I knew your name was familiar.
Call me, sir, if you can.
Just a quick note, they had, December of, of twenty twenty-five is open?
Five and next month.
Okay. Thanks. Happy Thanksgiving. All right, this time, move on to agenda item number four. It's a public hearing for a major modification to the final development plan in case four dash two zero one four Anderson for seventy-five eighty Beauchamp Avenue for Kroger. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is Alex Barnett, Permit Manager for Atlantic Sign Company, who's representing Kroger Limited Partnership One, who is the property owner. The location is at seventy-five eighty Beauchamp Avenue, and the zoning is EE Planned Retail Business. The request is additional wall signage, a total of five hundred thirty-five point fifteen square feet, where a maximum of five hundred square feet is permitted. And currently, there's four hundred thirty-four square feet on the building. And I'll go over this, there are some discrepancies in how staff calculated, I shouldn't say discrepancies, there were some differences of how staff calculated the wall signage versus how the applicant did, which actually, we calculated, staff calculated, that there's actually less wall signage there now than what was submitted. So, we'll go over the numbers in just a second. These are the three new signs that are proposed. One, sign one is liquor control, it's sixty-seven square feet, which replaces a sign that's currently there, that is eighteen square feet. Sign number two is a pickup letter set, and this is a brand-new sign that would be located on the drive-through side of the building, on the east facade. This would be a total square foot is of sixty-three. And then for sign number three, this is a pickup pharmacy drive-through sign that's gonna be on the right corner of the front, of the facade facing Beauchamp. It's ninety-five point four square feet, and this replaces an existing one hundred and six point eight square feet of signage. The zoning certificate was issued in two thousand and four for the original store, and then there was an expansion. So that is when the property was rezoned to EE Planned Retail. So we are going off of case four, twenty fourteen Anderson. That is why it's a major modification to the final development plan versus a PUD, because the property was rezoned. In two thousand and fourteen, the, the store was basically doubled in size. The property was expanded over to Wolfangle, so, and the corner was developed, and there was, it was developed at two different phases. Phase one was the Kroger addition, and phase two was the outlaw, where the, the stores are at the corner of Wolfangle and Beauchamp. So, that's why this is considered a major modification to the final development plan for the additional signage. This is the site in question again, this is the Kroger, these are the fueling canopies. This is the outlaw with the retail at the corner of Wolfangle, and then Beauchamp is at the bottom of the slide. This is the bank building, PNC Bank. The aerial, so the two signs would go onto the front of the building, and then the third sign is going on the, is proposed on the east side of the building. Topography map, there isn't actually, there's a decrease in grade from Beauchamp to the actual store. So a decrease in grade from south to north. This is, this zoning is EE Planned Retail. The town center is a PUD property across Wolfangle, C, C, Single Family, and then there are other planned business and retail along Beauchamp Avenue. So this is kind of hard to see, but when we were mentioning sign one, two, and three, these are the three signs that are being added. You know, I'll spend a little bit of time here. So this are, these are the existing signs, and these are the proposed signs. Staff calculated the existing signs at four hundred thirty-four square feet versus what the applicant had proposed, or what, which had submitted. And then as far as what is proposed, staff calculated it as five hundred thirty-five. And again, this is just a difference of interpretation of where you draw the boxes around the letters, how you calculate wall signage. So the, the signs that would be new, one is this Ohio Liquor sign. So again, that is sixty-seven square feet. The other sign is over here on the corner, this Kroger pickup sign, this would be replaced. And then the one on the side of the building, on the east side. So, the property itself, the building itself, is in our bonus formula because of the size of the building. So they are allowed as of right to have five hundred square feet. Due to the changes in signage, they would be at five hundred thirty-five. So they're asking for variance of thirty-five square feet. These are just the signs, again, existing and proposed. Signs one, two, and three, the Ohio Liquor sign, the pickup sign, and then the pickup, and then the pharmacy drive-through sign. These are the site photos, again, standing at Beauchamp Avenue, looking back at the building, at the front facade. And then looking at the east side of the building, there is currently no signage on that side of the building. And the proposed signage would be in this general vicinity. So approving resolution is just the article regarding wall signage. Again, they are allowed five hundred square feet, they're asking for five hundred thirty-five. The applicable plans is our Beauchamp plan, which this Anderson Town Center and the Kroger fall within neighborhood three. Encourages pedestrians friendly environment and two-story massing. That was a key component with the outlaw development at the corner of Beauchamp and Wolfangle. This building, of course, sits back, which, because it sits back, the wall signs is a little bit harder to see, specifically from Beauchamp and from Wolfangle, and due to the, the drop in topography. Anderson Comprehensive Plan, we cited the chapters of economic vitality and land use and, and development. And then design guidelines, these are the, are the sections of the design guidelines we felt were applicable to this particular one. So staff's recommendation was approval. Again, proposed signage is reasonable compared to the other storefronts in the town center that are permitted twenty percent of their facade. Kroger, I don't know if you would call it a disadvantage or not, but if you had a standalone storefront, you would get twenty percent of the facade maximum for your wall signage. Kroger itself, they have two main entrances into the building, but they also have other tenants within their building. So, those other tenants do not get, you know, the twenty percent allotment. We're looking at the entire facade of the building versus an individual tenant space. So it is calculated a little bit different, that's why they do fall in the bonus formula of five hundred square feet. But we felt like that was a reason for approval of the extra thirty-five square feet. Again, the building's over a hundred seventy-six thousand square feet, and set back quite a distance from both Beauchamp Avenue and Wolfangle. Felt like it was consistent with the design guidelines, that it, it matched with the facade of the building, and allows for the applicant to realize reasonable profit, maybe not a maximum profit. So we happy to answer any questions? There was one recommendation, and that was that temporary signage on the property be brought into compliance. There are some temporary banners on the building that are, exceed what is permitted.
What are, what are they saying?
There's different, this is a temporary sign here. Periodically, they, they come and go, but this is the biggest one right now on the, on the facade.
Okay. As far as your methodology for calculating, it's consistent across the terms, or this was a special case?
This is not a special case. We cited that in the staff report, because it is a big box store adjacent to smaller stores in the town center. So it's a good example of the difference of how wall signs is calculated for an individual tenant space versus a larger box store. And we do have the formula for five hundred square feet. Bonus formula for larger box stores, but we do felt like what they requesting an additional thirty-five square feet was consistent with, with the town center and the surrounding stores.
Okay. Commissioner Eliot, any questions for staff?
Uh, no, I don't have any, thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
I, I do. I don't think anybody is confused that it's Kroger store. And so I, I guess I'm curious as to why we didn't just ask them to be in compliance, I mean, and make signs just a little smaller.
We, we have worked with the applicant from their original submittal, and the original submittal was much more signage than what is there now, or what is the request before you. So that, we did work with the applicant to get to this point, I would say.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? This time with the applicant, please go forward, state your name, address, and affiliation.
Good evening, my name is Alex Barnett. My address is two three two eight Florence Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two zero six. I'm the Permit Manager for Atlantic Sign Company, and we represent Kroger. Um, I guess we'll start with, uh, Dr. Baker, your, your concerns. I think to say that everyone knows this is Kroger, generally, I would agree with that, but finding it or seeing the signs is a different matter. And so, I have some, a few points that improved wayfinding that would come about from these signs. Generally, we like to think that when you can see these signs more easily, whether it be larger or the colors, the drivers on the lot are able to spend less time looking for where they're going, cause they pull into the lot, they immediately see it, and when you spend less time looking where you're looking up and around, you're spending more time focused on the road ahead of you, and we believe that that leads to a safer environment on the property and around it. And, like I said, we were, we were proposing much larger signage. Kroger had come to us with quite a large sign package, and we worked over, of course, of a few months, I would say, with, uh, staff to bring it down to a reasonable level in working with Kroger, and obviously their desire for the biggest and the best. Um, but I would like to make one comment on my letter, that I was in error, and to avoid perjuring myself, compliance, where I worded that it was, had to be, the liquor store sign had to be there for compliance with state regulations, I was incorrect. That was information I got from Kroger. I later verified it with the state, and they told me that it is not required. So, I just want to make sure that, in all fairness, that you got, you all were aware of that.
That's one of the three, the OH whatever.
Yes, the OHLQ. I believe staff referred to it as the liquor control sign. Um, additionally, this will allow us to align with national branding. Kroger's gone through a massive branding update. In the last two to three years, they've updated their logo significantly, and they've added that, what they call the fresh card. It's the card, it kind of looks like it has an orange slice on top of it. Um, and they're trying to integrate that into the brand essence, so that when you see that logo, even without the Krogers letters, that you know, this is Kroger. And, so, allowing us to add those on there, which actually... Take that back, I don't think we're proposing that today, but, as a side point, we talked about improved wayfinding, especially with pickup. Pickup was a service designed for the busiest of customers, think the mom with the kids on her way home, or the way to soccer practice, the busy executive on their way to a meeting, they can easily stop and pick this up. So, people in a hurry, helping them find where to go is also important. And then for the pharmacy sign, knowing where the pharmacy drive-through is, is important in being able to find it easily, especially for the type of clientele that we are offering this service for, the people that may have ambulatory issues, or may be immunocompromised and can't go in the store. If they don't immediately see that, they may come into the store, putting themselves or others at risk if they're contagious and, um, or just, it may just be an undue burden on them. Additionally, it indicates where to go in the store, if you're going to the pharmacy, or if you're not. We've all been there, where you go to a store, you park on one side, and which, the one thing you need is, is clear across the store. So, I think this helps with that. I think these requests are in line and in, I think they honor the spirit of the zoning resolution, and I think they're scalable to the overall size of the store.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? See none? Any other questions, follow-up with staff? Okay, I'll, I'll close that part of the meeting. Commissioners, comments?
Well, uh, yes, uh, I do, I see that it's, it's over slightly, so I appreciate you working with staff on that. I, I do note that a couple of the signs are directional in nature, so they're not really advertising, they're just signage telling people where to go. And I know, I'll give some personal experience, that, uh, I did use the pickup location a few times, and was trying to figure out where the heck it is on that store, because you, you drive past the pharmacy and it's the back there. So, I do think there's some value for these additional signs, even though they go uh, over a little bit, and I think this kind of store is just unusual in and of itself. I'm trying to think of another example where you've got so much going on in there. And, um, I do agree with the applicant that the, the signs appearing on the building, even though they are slightly over what we allow, it's, um, it's within scale because that building's so large, you know, you look at some of the ones where it's pulled out like this, and, um, you know, it's definitely within scale of the building, if not smaller. So, I think it would be, I feel like especially because a lot of it's directional, it would be reasonable to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm torn, you know, I really don't think we need more signs anywhere. And so, that is the bias from which I operate, and I really don't see, I mean, it's only thirty, you could argue it both ways, it's only thirty-five square feet bigger, so what's the big deal about that? But why can't they make it just, you know, five percent smaller? Uh, so, I'm torn. I agree, it, they're not hugely obnoxious or changing the character of the building. I, I do agree with that.
What about the temporary signage? Might be an opportunity to read that in.
Yeah.
I think it should definitely go.
That's of value.
That's kind of an ongoing issue.
All right, well, this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, I'll try and make a motion, um, in, in this, uh, case four twenty fourteen, uh, that the, the board approve the requested variance in overall signage to allow five hundred and thirty-five point one five square feet, where, uh, five hundred square feet is permitted, uh, that we are doing this based on and accepting the findings as included with, uh, the staff report, and that the variance would authorize the three requested sign, either new signage or change in sign area, as identified as signs one, two, and three on page one of the staff report. So, that motion is to approve that, subject to the condition that, uh, before there be a zoning certificate issued for the new signage, that all the temporary signage be brought into compliance.
Okay. Carrie, do you have it? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Dr. Baker?
Am I allowed to say reluctantly, yes?
Mr. Allen?
I'll just say yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. So, Carrie's three to, to zero, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other business, Paul?
Uh, no other business. The December meeting is pushed up a week as well, like the November, December the sixteenth.
Do we have cases already on the docket?
We don't have them on the docket, and we had the one that's continued, and then, um...
What's your deadline?
We do have a couple potential cases.
Okay, great. I got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yes, yes, yes.
Aye, thanks. Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.